You didn't come down before I said I'll buy anything.
Oh, no. Crazy busy.
Recording in progress.
Amy, he's out of town, so she's just now sending us a Zoom in case he can join.
He's waiting online.
Okay.
He's waiting to be like that.
Yeah, he didn't tell us. I didn't know that.
Well, somebody's on. I mean, he believes he's waiting online.
Okay. Okay, let me tell Thomas. And he might have to wait till the meeting starts, because I think he just did.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we go ahead? Good evening and welcome to the Federway City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 6th of 2022. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. Councilmember Tran is absent, and he is excused on vacation. Also, we have Councilmember Jack Walsh, my understanding, will be joining us via Zoom. He's on. Welcome, Councilmember. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and get started. We've got Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. And we've got recent events. We had the Amazon Fresh ribbon cutting on August 11th. Movies at Town Square Park. We had the Jungle Cruise on August 13th. The Performing Arts and Events Center had a fifth anniversary event on August 19th. The Lions Club Car Show was on August 27th. And update on King County Landmarks Commission, Camp Kilworth. I'm sure you'll hear more about this, but the landmark nomination for Camp Kilworth was unanimously approved by the Federway Landmarks Commission on August 25th, making the historic camp the first official Federway landmark. We're excited to see Camp Kilworth preserved and restored as Federway and South King County, as a Federway and South King County Active Youth Camp. So congratulations, and thank you so much for all of that labor. All right, report on licensing requirements for hotels and motels, Ordinance 22-927. Brian Davis, the interim city administrator, will give a brief report, as promised, at our last council meeting. Brian.
And rather than navigate through the links, I'll go right to the, actually, I'm going to have to go through the links. So in Community Development, under Community Services, we now have a permanent supportive housing and transitional, there's going to be emergency shelter licensing application. We don't have any applicants yet because the two projects most noteworthy, being the Red Line, former Red Line and the former Extended Stay, do not have occupancy yet, so they're not required to get a license yet. But once they want a certificate of occupancy, they would have to have this license from the city before we grant them.
Brian, is your microphone on? Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just talk like this all night?
All right, very good. Thanks, Zach.
Okay. I think this will be easier. All right. So, again, so we have the license application on our webpage. And again, once the Red Line and the Extended Stay, which I think is what most people are concerned about, once they want to get occupancy of the building, they would have this license filled out, indicating who the license holder is and also the management company of the facility. But most importantly, they would have to, their signature would include compliance with the operational compliance, operation and plan requirement. Are you guys going to take a picture of me? Okay. Okay, that's, any better? Okay. This is a serious subject, I'm, so. Anyway, so they would have to comply with the operational plan that the council passed. These first two attachments would be provided to the applicant, and they would have to sign that they're in compliance with that. And they would have to submit an operational plan every year that they renew their license, so it would be an annual compliance check of that they're in compliance. That, just by way of refresher, so those requirements, those are in code. And so it starts here in 1235070. We had a number of meetings on this, but just to go through this real quickly, they'd need a security plan, protocols for working with prospective residents with felony warrants to resolve outstanding warrants, and apply legal authorities, take all reasonable legal steps to obtain verifiable information, vital information of the tenants. They can't take anyone in unless they have a referral first, so it's not just walk on off the street and then they take someone. They have to have a referral to be a tenant. Have accurate record keeping, or at least indicate to us what their procedures will be for accurate record keeping. And then to post prominently onsite a list of all human and health services offered with brief descriptions and contact information for those services. Follow what we call SEPTED, or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and that's basically how a a building or a site or anything that's constructed on the ground contributes to better visibility of the site, and by so doing would prevent the frequency of crime incidents. So if there's more eyes on the facility, then there's, that's crime prevention through environmental design. And then to broadly disseminate this, not just to the tenants, but to residents of transit and common pedestrian bicycle routes, so that it's, the information is out to more people. They have to have lighting, they have to have, at certain standards, they have to have a manager onsite with that operational plan in place. And then they also have to verify that all the residents, I mean, it's one thing to say they have a plan, but they have to verify that all residents comply with the standards of that plan, in addition to any federal, state, and local laws that would apply as well. And then, no threatening or unsafe behavior, and no residents shall use, possess, or sell illegal drugs. And that would have to be, again, that would be something renewed on an annual basis through our permit center here. Now, there are some, actually several existing permanent supportive housing locations in the city, and we're working with those providers to get those, get their licenses in, because they've existed for a long time. Fusion is a good example of that. And so we've been working with them, because they have several sites throughout the city that are individual. It's not like a one concentrated site, like the Red Line or the Extended Stay. So we've been working with Fusion on an application that would make it reasonable for them to turn in an application without being too cumbersome for every single of their sites. But again, the Red Line, Extended Stay, they're not open yet, so they don't, if they're not open, they don't need a license. But they can't open until they do get a license. But as they get closer, we suspect that they will come to us for that license. That's what we have at this point. Have any questions?
All right, any questions? Councilmember Doby?
Just one question on the licensing. Does the names and all that information become public record?
It would.
They would?
Yeah.
So what's the, we have some organizations in the area where people are somewhere because they're for safety or domestic violence and things like that. How do we keep that from becoming public record? Or is that something we should be thinking about?
Call up the true experts.
I would clarify that the names of the residents will not be something that the city is collecting. That will, often, it's collected by providers in the homeless management information system with King County. And we won't have access to that. But we will be able to verify that they have adequate measures in place to collect intake forms, same things that we do for our grant funding.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, Deputy Mayor Honda, and then Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you. So I have a question on homes in neighborhoods that have groups of people living there. Are there any limits on how many vehicles can be parked?
No.
So if a neighborhood is having an issue with vehicles parked up and down and causing some potential issues, who would they contact?
If they're parked illegally, they would contact the police.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sephardos?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brian. In the, it says, I can't think, the CFR, the first one, .070, talks about
Oh, yeah.
the safety of employees and residents. So, how, that one, the first one, adopt and broadly disseminate a written security and emergency plan for residents and employees. And I know they're not responsible for the neighborhood. So is that when the police kicks in then? And is there a way where they should be the ones notifying the police? Is that something?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I don't misunderstand.
Okay, so it talks about security and emergency plan for residents and employees.
Yes.
So if there was something significant that happens there and spills into the neighborhood, is that when they're responsible to call 911, and should that responsibility be?
Are you talking about the residents or the?
The staff, actually.
The staff, so, yeah, anytime that there would, it doesn't necessarily have to spill out into the neighboring properties and for it to be an incident. It could be something internal that they could, if they can't manage themselves, then certainly they could call the police, just like any other apartment complex would.
Okay. Because it says written security and emergency plan, so I didn't know how that
Oh, he does.
translates to the broader neighborhood, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, this, so this security and emergency plan, it would be more for, so we talked below in the code, we adopted provisions about the behavioral aspect, or the behavioral expectations of a facility. The security and emergency plan would be, you know, in an actual situation where they would either need to be evacuated or if there's some sort of incident that requires, you know, broad emergency response. But if there's, if there's any kind of, one thing that perhaps we haven't illustrated very well is that these facilities are, up until we changed the code, they were classified as as a residence or as an apartment. So it's as if another apartment, you're asking the same question about another apartment in the city. You know, what do they do if there's an incident? Well, it's really no different. We just want them to, for our assurance, make sure that there's something in place to keep not just their residents safe, but the surrounding residents safe as well. And that often involves coming up with a plan, if there's a major incident, on how to get their tenants safe, if there's something wrong or a situation within the building that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh, did you have a question or comment?
Yes. With enforcement of,
Reverend, Councilmember, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you say that again?
Great. As far as enforcement matters, if the, if there are problems with violations such as repeated use of drugs by the residents, can the license be revoked, or would it be a matter of not being?
Yeah, so if I understand his question, it's if there's a situation on the premises that violates the provisions of the license, and if that occurs, can the city revoke the license? The answer is yes. We try to work with them first, so that we wouldn't have to get to that point. But if we get indication from them that they're not willing to deal with the problem, then yes, the city could, at any point, revoke the license.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember. Council, Councilmember Doby?
If the license becomes revoked, do they have to empty the building?
So then it's, operationally, it would no longer be available. So there would be, again, we'd want to work with them, so we could avoid that. But, yeah, we'd get to a point where if the license revoked, then the facility is no longer licensed. And so we would have to provide alternate accommodations for the residents.
We would, or?
Well, yeah, through compliance, they would have to be provided alternate accommodations.
So I just want to clarify what I heard.
Yeah.
If these rules and regulations are not followed, and there's a lot of complaints and they're not followed, then we could revoke the license, and then they would have, the county would have to move the people to some other location suitable out of Federway or somewhere else?
That's correct, and I would characterize it that revoking the license is like the last resort.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to know what the end game was, if somebody does.
We're talking, just, yeah, the beginning to an end, yes, that is what would happen.
Thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So if the city is close to revoking a license for one of these buildings that King County is bringing to us, does King County have a recourse? Do they, can they appeal it? Or, I mean, obviously, they should fix whatever the problem is, but if they don't agree with us as to a problem existing?
Yeah, through the compliance process, there is an avenue for them to contest our, if we determine that there's a violation that's occurred, then they can, they can contest it in court, I suppose, just like any other code enforcement action that we do. Where if we are taking action against a property, you know, we've had some cases where they, we go to court, and then the court either mediates an action or rules for one party or another.
So code enforcement officers would be the ones to go to these buildings and check things out?
They would probably be accompanied by a subject matter expert, but they're the ones who would, they would administer the compliance process. But as far as being experts in the field, we'd probably have a subject matter expert accompany them, along with police as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Okay, now, moving on to the most important part of the evening, a public comment. People have three minutes, unless they're speaking for five individuals that are present. Also, please, as the council has changed its rules, please state the city that, not your address, but just the city that you live in. And when green means go, yellow means 30 seconds, red means please stop. So we've got quite a number of comments, so I'll read off the first number, first few, and if you could sort of, folks could sort of queue up, that'd be great. Rebecca Martin, after Rebecca, then Jim Ross, then Jeffrey Tancredi, and Ken Blevins. Yeah, I spoke about it. Well, you know what, why don't we, why don't we hear from Becca first?
I can wait.
No, it's okay, you're there right now, let's, go ahead, and then we'll hear from the Camp Kilworth folks. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Becca Martin, I'm the CEO of the Greater Federway Chamber of Commerce. I live in unincorporated King County, right on the border here. On behalf of the business community, I want to thank you for your pivotal partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the Chamber focuses on initiatives that identify, build, and enhance existing small business ecosystems, and in turn, diversify our business base. This is why, following the announcement of the American Rescue Plan Act in March 2021, the Chamber immediately began a series of webinars about accessing the ARPA funds and initiated discussions with the city to secure a portion of the $19 million in federal funds that were allocated to pass through the city for COVID recovery. As many of you know, one of the four eligible uses for the ARPA funds was assistance to small businesses, hard-hit industries, and economic recovery related to the pandemic. With our strategic focus on long-term sustainability and inclusive economic growth, the Chamber requested funding in July 2021 to implement a business retention and expansion program, as well as a destination management program for Federway. At this time, the Greater Federway Chamber of Commerce wishes to withdraw its recovery-based programming request for the federal funding that's available through the city. And as always, want to thank you for your continued support of the Chamber Network of Business Leaders in Federway, for the time you devote to the city, and for your moments today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Becca. Okay, Camp Kilworth, you know, I saw this, let's have everybody associated with Camp Kilworth come on up to the podium, and we'll give you, we're not going to, yeah, let's give them a, let's give them a big round of applause for the Camp Kilworth news. Great job. Please, the floor is yours.
We did it. You've been listening to me for 20 years. So I just want to say thank you. I just so appreciate everybody that's listened all these years and sees the value of this camp for the future, and the future of this community, and the children in the community. And I want to thank, learning about the process, Sarah Steen from King County with Historic Landmarks was absolutely wonderful in working with both us, with us and Northwest vernacular. And Forterra, for saving the land environmentally. And for the Y of the Greater Seattle, YMCA of Greater Seattle, for saving it, running it, and we just really appreciate with this landmark application, it is saved historically as well. So anybody that hasn't seen those buildings, they will, with some effort, be restored. And this is only a portion of KEEP, but these, they'll say their own words. But I wanted just to say thank you for Marie Chauquard. You guys endorsed her as far as being on the Historic Landmark Commission, and we really appreciated that. And I thought Ford Culture and was, and actually Ford Culture and the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation were fabulous. They worked constantly with us, and they were actually at that nomination meeting. And let me tell you, that was a long presentation. And I thank them because they not only give funds, but they gave education, and they also gave support at these, and Susan Honda and Bruce for being there and holding through that long meeting and saying something as well. So I just can't thank everybody enough for all the years that you've listened to me, and now you get to listen to these people, because they're going to carry it forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nadia Sheckler, and I have collaborated with the KEEP group for the last few years. I'm not a fan of public speaking, so forgive me while I read this from my phone. Mary, this is your job, so thank you for all you did for us here. This is a significant moment for Camp Kilworth, a win for the city and our many diverse communities. This is a win for historic preservation and environmental education. This was not an easy task. It took many community-focused advocates, significant efforts, to achieve this moment. And everyone should share in a unified feeling of accomplishment. We are fortunate that Forterra and the YMCA of Greater Seattle accepted such a heroic task. To save these community relics from years of deterioration was not a small request. This is not the easiest or cheapest route. This is greater than that. It is a symbol for the community. It is a path for what is best for all, now and in the future. My request, as we share in this moment of triumph, is that we hold on to this feeling and move forward together. The next few months and potentially years are going to require collaborative efforts. Time is not on our side. These historic features are deteriorating rapidly. Through solution-minded efforts with the city, its employees, and staff are critical. I hope you will address requests and communication from the YMCA and Forterra throughout the restoration process with urgency and an all-hands-on-deck effort to save your historic landmarks. The reach and resources of our community nonprofit is limited. The quest needs your voices, your support, your knowledge, and efforts. This landmark is a big step in the right direction, but the journey is far from done. In many ways, it's just getting started. I hope we will all be there together when the goal of returning outdoor education to Camp Kilworth is reached, with the same feeling in our hearts, knowing we did everything within our capabilities to restore this community resource, so that we may have many more accomplishments to celebrate together.
Thank you. My name's Dawn Meter-McCoslin. I'm a Federway resident as well. And I just wanted to say a few words also to the community and to you, to thank you for your support of this effort. Back in 2017, 2018, as a planning commissioner, I remember the ordinance for the historic preservation coming up in the city. And that was a really important foundation for what we now have as our first landmark here in the city. So I want to thank you for your support of that ordinance, also the proclamation that you gave early on on the historic significance of it, and the support that many of you have provided with letters of support for our grant funding that helped with this effort. And for many people in the community that may not know much about this effort, it has been ongoing, but it was quiet for quite some time because of the sensitive nature of the development risk to the property and the negotiations. And so part of what I just want to express today is to invite everyone to join this effort now, because we do, as Nadia said and Mary said, there is a long road ahead to restore these buildings and open them up to youth. And this is a time where we really are encouraging volunteers, we're encouraging council members and other leaders in the community to lend their letters of support again for our next rounds of funding, to come out and volunteer with us when it's time to pull out all the invasives on the property and to help restore those buildings. You can reach the KEEP, which is the Kilworth Environmental Education Preserve, and we'll help connect you to all those efforts. So thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Vargo. I've lived here for 57 years and also a member of the Historical Society. And I just really, really want to give my wholehearted thanks to Brian Davis, to the council, to the mayor, for not only the proclamation that we were given, but Washington Trust for Historical Places gave us the nomination in 2018 as the most endangered place. And that really catapulted us, so everybody kind of took notice of us, gave us a little street cred. But this process of landmarking came at the city very fast. They only have a few days to get their ducks in a row. We're part of an inter-local agreement with King County, which means that we are able to use their resources. And since it was the first time that we did this, I just am really excited and hope that in the future, we now know what to expect and how this process goes. And so if anybody out there has any landmarking or any significant structures, properties, we all need to save more in Federway. The first is wonderful, and I'm just really grateful to be a part of this very intelligent, gusto group. And just really thank you, thank you so much for all your help. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Council President Kochmar?
Mary, would you come back to the podium, Mary? Would you, for those people who don't know what we're talking about, could you describe the property of Camp Kilworth? The size, the previous, you see, where it's at?
Yeah, Camp Kilworth was approximately 30 acres of high-bank coastal forest. It's about the last second-growth coastal forest left within the South King County area. And it served as a Boy Scout camp from 1934 and on until it finally closed in 2017. But William Kilworth deeded the property over. It was intended to teach youth. And it was intended to teach about the environment, about your own personal growth. And that is our goal, that it will continue to do that. And so we didn't want to see housing on there, and not that housing isn't important, but not there. And so the lodge actually was built in, well, it was dedicated in '36. So there's two old park rustic-style lodges on the property, and those are what we're saving. So we hope that we'll always serve this community, families, children, as a gathering place for public meetings, whatever is needed, it's going to be there for. And it's all interlinked with trails, and that's what the YMCA said that they really, really needed a camp within 20, 30 minutes of the public that they serve, the schools that they serve. And this camp fits that bill, because we can go from Fife to Auburn to Kent, on up into Sea-Tac, and of course, Federal Way. So I cannot thank everybody enough. I'm so excited.
I know. Because the location is down Dash Point Road, about what?
Yeah, it's about a mile north of the Pierce-King County line, and it's off of Dash Point Road, and it's, it's in the process, like I said, it needs a lot of restoration, because it's surprising what's happened since 2017. So as people have stated, there'll be a lot of work. There's still more work, but saving it was the first step. So we are just, and the city has listened, how many years have you listened to me? 20 years? So there's nothing like persistence, is there?
That's right.
Anyway, I just hope you all get an opportunity to one day go down there, take your children, your grandchildren, and just actually experience this place. It's very, very unique, and we can't not thank everybody enough, all the people who have listened to me for years and years and years on this. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We've got Deputy Mayor Honda who'd like to say a few words.
First of all, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done, because everyone who has worked to save Camp Kilworth, you never gave up. And there were many, many times when it looked like it wasn't going to happen, and you could just throw in the towel and walk away, and you couldn't do that, and I so appreciate that. Our children and our grandchildren and the children after those children will benefit from your hard work and your dedication, and I really, really want to thank you. Listening to the hearing, there were a couple moments when I thought that they weren't going to vote for it, and it scared me. My heart stopped, and I just thought, what can I do? You know, we were all remote. We weren't there with them. And instead of not supporting it, the two commissioners actually wanted to add more landmarks instead of not supporting it. But that's not the way it sounded. It sounded like they were not going to support it at all, and it was really scary to me that they might not vote for it. So thank you very, very much. You deserve a medal or maybe a building named after you. I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, three efforts, so stay with it. Third time's a charm.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I do have pink sheets for Mary, Nadia, and Dawn. Are we... Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. All right. Okay, Jim Ross.
I'd just like to say real quick that I've lived in Federal Way for 60 years. I grew up going to Camp Kilworth. I was Incub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and everything else, became an Eagle Scout, and I, most of it, my time was spent at Camp Kilworth. It's the most wonderful place in the world, and I thank you for saving it. Now moving on. We heard a little bit about the hotels tonight, and that's why I'm here, to talk about the East Wind Motel. Terrible things are happening out front, out there. People that are doing drugs openly, day in and day out. This weekend, I witnessed every day of the week, drugs being done. On my way driving here, I drove down there to see what was happening. Four or five people were out front doing drugs. The management of that hotel support the drug addiction and things that are going on. And if they don't, I brought a picture here to prove it to you. Okay? This is the manager of the hotel's car in the parking lot, and what it says on it is, "Don't walk by Room 103 with a lit cigarette or weed, a pipe, or meth, and no loud music." Okay? We have a business, and I support businesses. I'm a businessman in our community and our city. I support businesses, but I don't support this one. And I'm afraid that when we open these two other hotels in our city, that this is what's going to happen. We are allowing these people to sit out front of that motel and openly do drugs, openly do all kinds of things that shouldn't be done, and we drive by it every day like there's nothing going on. And as a city, we're not doing something about it, and we need to do something about it. I guarantee you, if I went to most of the businesses in this city and I asked them to give me $10 a day to pay for a police officer to be stationed on a motorcycle outside that place to chase people off, everybody in the business community would do it, because we're all tired of it. And as a city, Jim, we need to do something. Our police aren't doing it. I watch police cars drive by it every day, and nothing's being done. It's, and it's exactly what we've all gotten up here multiple times and said to the city council, that when these two new motels come in and they're under King County's rules, we're going to have no control over them. And this is going to be in our neighborhoods and on our streets, and it's a terrible thing, and we need to solve it. The one last thing I want to say is also, it is my understanding that in the City of Federal Way, we have a policy that when there's theft that happens in the city, that it should be reported to the police. I can tell you, and I won't name the place, but somewhere that is owned by the City of Federal Way recently was broken into, and things were stolen from there, including some of my equipment, and no police report was filed. And I think that no matter what, no matter how big or small, police reports should be filed by City of Federal Way employees to, because this is all things that every one of us paid for, and there's no excuse for just letting these things go. As a business, you're responsible for your inventory. As a city, we should be responsible for our inventory, and I just think that there should be some follow-up on that.
There will be. There will be. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for letting me know about this several days ago. And perhaps maybe after public comment, Chief, I'll ask you to talk about the new ownership of the East Wind and, you know, what's going on there and our efforts there. Thank you, Jim. All right, Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members? Oh, wrong ones. Sorry. Tonight, I'm advocating for Catrice Dennis. By the way, this is her daughter, Asia. I am advocating for Catrice Dennis and her homeschool program called Teaching with Love and Care. I am requesting on her behalf, ARPA funds due to the shutdown of her classroom during COVID-19. In just her second year as a homeschool teacher, Ms. Dennis was forced to close her classroom and improvise her teaching program due to the pandemic. Initially, she picked up the students from the parents' home and then drove to nearby parks and even in the backyard of some of the parents' homes in order to teach the children, because she had a classroom at 312th and Pack Highway that she had to close because kids couldn't go to the school. She got the idea to buy a bus one day when she was teaching in the backyard of someone's house. It started to rain, so she got the idea to buy a bus and convert it to a mobile classroom. She invested much of her life savings into remodeling the bus into a mobile classroom. Ms. Dennis teaches kids from preschool to age nine or third grade. She would like to expand to higher grades. Teaching with Love and Care is a place where children can experience learning in a loving environment. It is a place where the emphasis is placed on developing the human spirit to help produce good and healthy human beings that will change the world for the better. Catrice gives support to families not choosing the traditional school route. She provides academic and social-emotional support. She builds confidence in the kids. When you feel good about yourself, she says, you will do better. The families that are with Catrice are choosing to homeschool. She partners with experts in the fields. She has an entomologist that she contracts with, teaches kids about insects. They love learning about bugs. She has a Spanish teacher that she contracts with. The kids learn some Spanish. They go to a farm in Kent. They travel to this farm where the kids can learn about animals, and they ride the horses. They learn about nature, the wetlands and state parks. They learn archery. They contract with Kempo Karate. They learn martial arts. Catrice designs the educational program for each student and their individual needs with parents' input. She creates a positive experience for each child. Whatever the parent wants for the child, we work together. Her four-year-olds are reading phonics, writing, and learning some Spanish. They can do basic math. These kids will have a strong foundation. They know how to say their affirmations. "I am smart. I am courageous. I am kind." They sit and meditate. Just about done. She teaches them to control their body. She addresses their discipline by saying, "I have to be still. Tell your body it is time to be still." Thank you so much. Is there anything she needs to do to request for the ARPA funds?
Do we have Bill in the room? Bill, why don't you connect with them, and we'll give you all the information. And I think Sarah is in the back. Well, actually, Bill, I think you're the good contact person. No, Bill. Bill, actually, yes, please. Sorry. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey. Okay, Ken Blevins.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm Ken Blevins. I'm Federal Way, 50 years and going. So I don't know how to follow that. That was very positive, and I'm not going to be. So, but that's just upfront. So this, just wanted to really get back to the hotels and all this very weak Band-Aid that we put on here because we had to, supposedly. I really wish our city would just stand up and say, "No, no, no," until blue in our face, but we gave up last year and voted for this. And this, I think, is the follow-up that was promised, that we were supposed to follow up on this in six months, correct? Is this the follow-up that was supposed to be done in six months? We'll just say it is. So nine months later. Anyways, I would really want our city to fight this thing and make sure it does turn out to be as positive as possible. I do want the best thing for these people that are going into this hotel, but I know it's not going to be, because they're mostly addicted to drugs, and if you don't have people addicted to drugs with people that are, what do you have there? It's not safe. So it's a ridiculous thing that's been put on us by 12/20. This is a redistribution of homeless drug addiction by the State of Washington, voted on by Claire Wilson and Jameela Taylor, perpetrated on our city and put on our city council and our leaders with their hands tied. And it's ridiculous. It shouldn't happen. And these people should be, that money that they're spending right now should be put into addiction, not homelessness. If you focus on homelessness, then you don't have, or if you focus on addiction, then you're not going to have the homeless problem, mostly. If you go out into the woods with these people that are in these camps, they're all on drugs. They all don't want to get off of them. They're all going to end up in these housing, which we know all over the Puget Sound where they already have health through housing. It's not healthy. People are trying to get out of them because it's unsafe. People are being wheeled out of them because it's unsafe on stretchers, and it's a failure. And then we have a group that has zero experience with this get chosen for our city's hotel, right in the middle of our city. So what I'm hoping for is that our police department's ready for this, our staff is ready for this, that they keep track of all the people that are breaking laws out in our community and find out if these guys are residents. Okay? Hopefully, they're registered as residents. That is their resident. We should check up on that, make sure that they are, who is a resident there, and we should be able to correlate whether they're actually living here and perpetrating crime on our city in Seattle and King County, sent them here because of our so-called state representatives that were supposed to represent us. And last year, when we went door-to-door, 99% of the people were not for this. We had a meeting, and people were pissed. They were upset because it was being forced on us. We're the people of Federal Way. We should have a say in it. We didn't. And in this case, I hope our representatives here will stand up, be active, make sure that these guys, that they're actually, you know, doing something wrong, that you hold them to it and take their license away as quick as possible, because I can see bad things happening. Again, I wish the best, and I wish the best for you guys, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ken. David Harrelson. And after David, we've got Ann-Michelle Gohart, and then Rose Ratteray, and then Betty Taylor.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and welcome back from your summer break. I hope you got some time to rest. I am Dave Harrelson, and obviously, I'm with the Federal Way Public Market. I'm here with a couple of other, our other board members that'll say a few comments. But we saw on your agenda that what we've been talking to you about is coming to a head, which is the distribution of the ARPA funds. We'd really like you to consider strongly investing some of those Recovery Act funds in the development of a public market in Federal Way. I've attended enough of these meetings to see that our city lacks the tax base and lacks the revenue streams to be able to solve a lot of the problems that we're facing, much less those going into the future. We really think that bringing a public market into the city will do a lot in terms of benefiting our businesses and generating both more money into the tax base, but also into business revenue. Building a public market has been shown to be a proven economic development activity. I know a lot of the ARPA funds are to address short-term harms that were done on people because of the virus, but we need to build a solid foundation to be able to recover and to sustain things into the future, and we feel a public market should be part of the downtown plan. Doing so will attract tourists and visitors and shoppers from surrounding communities that might have no other reason to come here and spend their money. It will increase foot traffic, which will benefit other businesses and venues in the city. And we build a lot of infrastructure in terms of the park, the pack, the stairs, the light rail, and those things are all coming to the city, and we just think that having a central hub, a gathering place, that supports all of that will make that just much more valuable and used in a better way. So the bottom line is just that we're here to ask for your support in allocating, or actually investing some of the money in long-term economic development by supporting a public market. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Ann-Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Ann-Michelle Hart. I'm a resident of Federal Way. No notes tonight. I could spew a lot of statistics, but I want to talk to you from my heart. There's a saying that says, "If you give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. If you teach him how to fish, you feed him for a lifetime." What we need is for the council to help us buy fishing poles so we can teach people how to build their own business and go out and fish for their own lunch. This is a, when we talk about ARPA funds being for the recovery, Federal Way's been hit hard because we have a lot of retail. Now, what we're talking about doing with the public market is teaching people how to build businesses, but it's not just about retail. It's about high-touch, people-to-people sale. So we're not talking about a Macy's or a People's Department Store or anything that we're talking about people sharing their experiences. Here's what worked for me. Buy this product because I made it. Here's how I made it. It meets your goals because it does this, and it'll also meet your goals because you're supporting a local business and you're helping us grow our tax base. In these businesses growing, we will not only be hiring more local residents to fill these places, but we will also be generating more tax base for the city. And if you've watched the Pike Place Market and Pibus Market and the Fifth Street Market in Eugene, Oregon, the ripple effect is enormous. They don't just teach one person how to fish. Once you teach one person how to fish, they teach two other people how to fish, and it just goes on and on. We need to build a hub where we can expand and we can grow as a city, and this market is a way to do it, and we hope you will help us get some fishing poles. Thank you.
Rose Ratteray.
Hi. I just came because it's been two years since I've been here. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Susan. Hello, Linda. Hello, Lydia. Hello, Erica. I just met you. I don't know Jack, but I'll get to know you. I've missed all of you. It's been a hard two years, but I wanted to say, welcome back. Oh, I forgot. Chief Andy, who looks fantastic. He's gotten younger-looking, have you noticed? And I'm so happy to see him, and a few of the other people around here. He looks great. So I just wanted to say, I am delighted to be here, and I didn't know you were meeting back in person. I think you just started, right?
It's been a while.
So welcome back, and I hope to meet with all of you and get to know you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Rose. Good to see you again. Betty Taylor. Then after Betty, it'd be Greg McCann, Josias Jean-Pierre, and Juan Luis Juarez Ramos. And then Suzanne Vargo.
Another shooting, another homicide. Another shooting, another homicide in Federway. Every day, or every other day, or every week, or every two weeks, or every month, or every year, someone gets shot. Citizens of Federway are sick of all this violence. We want to get together as a group and rally for the Seahawks. We want to get together as a group and campaign for this candidate or that candidate. But when it comes time for us to get together and come together as a group, stand on the corner and hold up signs in behalf of nonviolence, nobody shows up. We did this Sunday, a group of us stood on the corner, on the corner, 320th and Pack Highway. We stood there strong and independent because we are fed up. We are sick and tired. Anna Patrick, Judy Ross, Charlotte Shucrap, John Shucrap, Cheryl Hirst, Susan Honda, and Buse Honda. Crime has gone outrageous. When are we, as a citizen, going to take action? So, at the, at our, when we were sitting, holding signs, do you know how many people were honking? We got so many humps. We got so many, "We love what you're doing. Keep doing what you're doing." And there was only seven of us. What would it look like if we had more than seven? What would it look like if we get the school district, the community? We need to reach out because it's not enough to go on TV. We need to take action ourselves. It's not enough to wait for somebody else. We have to do it. And if, we have to get out there every Saturday, every Sunday, on the corner, 320th, 348th, wherever there is a shooting. There was a shooting, when was it, yesterday or today, on Horton Road? I'd be like, how can I get to 320th? How can I get to Horton Road? How can I stand on the corner? I mean, really, there's too many, too many shootings. And where are we? Standing behind closed doors because nobody wants to get involved. Well, I'm not one because I'm going to get involved. And you know what? I got my little, I had my little male horn on Sunday. The thing didn't do no good. So, you know what? I went and got a paper. Baby, this one whole hour. So, I'm going to get up there and holler until I lose my voice because I'm tired. I'm tired.
Well, thank you, Betty. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. Greg McCann.
Hello, I'm Greg McCann, the VP of the Federway Public Market and a longtime Federway resident. As Dave stated, we think ARPA funds would be well-spent on a feasibility study and site analysis for the public market. ARPA guidelines state that investment in critical infrastructure is particularly well-suited use of ARPA funds because it is a non-recurring expenditure that could be targeted to strategically important, long-term assets that provide benefits over many years. Further, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency says critical infrastructure includes buildings necessary to maintain normalcy in daily life. The root of normalcy in daily life is food and community, especially in challenging times, and that's what the market would bring. The market will be critical infrastructure. With reliance on local business, not far-flung supply chains, the market will provide resiliency in the face of whatever challenges may come. As the Pike Place Market has been around for 100 years, the Federway Public Market will be a long-term asset to the community. At the cost of about $100,000, $220,000, these two studies would tell us with a high degree of confidence if a public market can be successful in Federway. The third component to that, the business plan, would cost a bit extra. With a positive answer from the studies and with city support in the form of study funding and community support, we will be able to find the rest of the funding for the market itself. And speaking of community support, as of today, we've raised over $10,000 with another $10,000 promised in matching funds. As the hub of the new downtown, the market will tie together the other city projects, the pack, the park, the stairs into a cohesive whole to the benefit of the entire community. So, Mayor, City Council, we appreciate your continued support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Greg. Josias Jean-Pierre. Kind of a fun name to say.
Hello, I'm Josias Jean-Pierre. I've been in Federway for 13 years. Talking about the ARPA funds, public safety. I don't understand how do we get the Chamber of Commerce and Federal and Mayor as part of public safety, as if they don't have, receive a lot of money anyways from Federway. For those of us who does not know, in the last 10 years, the Chamber of Commerce has received $304,324.16, and they asked for $1.45 million from the ARPA funds. It was reduced to $750 by the ad hoc committee. The mayor has received $424,361. They asked for $600,000, and it was reduced to $300,000 by the ad hoc committee. And I think these organizations have received enough money from the city. These are not public safety organizations whatsoever. I stood here multiple times for several years talking about how can we invest back in our city, our youth, our community? How can we invest in that? And all we're being told is, "Thank you. Thank you for sharing." And you can't spin in any way to convince me a club whose membership is comprised of large businesses, banks, and government entities, or a local dying newspaper, Federal and Mayor, that wouldn't exist without regular subsidies from the city have anything to do with public safety. The Chamber of Commerce does not do anything for the community, but then, yeah, we talk about giving them money around public safety, and they don't do nothing for the community. And I've been for 13 years. I haven't seen them do not do one thing. It's a club that business for paying its members. The only item resembling charity I could find on the website was a link to the Washington Childcare Collaborative Tax Force, which is a legislative organization funded by taxpayers' dollars. The mayor doesn't even try to pretend they care about the community. We want to invest money to give them for public safety, and they don't invest in community. There's no other city in our state has even entertained something this ridiculous. It's bad enough that our administrative staff wants to be hogged the majority of the funds for themselves, but to allow a club and a newspaper to have their own category, entities that do not serve our community but work for themselves exclusively. This is not the task we're given when we receive the ARPA funds. Also, when it comes to John Connor street naming, what's the status on that? Because he was here way before this camp was here, and we talked so much about this camp, but several times, over and over again, we stood up here talking about, hey, John Connor, about the naming for the street, what's the status on that? We haven't heard anything. And I feel like we should go ahead and respect him, who's been here way much longer than this camp who's been here that we're going to invest money in, but please give us the status on John Connor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Juan Luis Juarez Ramos.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Juan Juarez. I did speak in the last meeting about Military Road, about the man who, you know, of course, offered me marijuana and drugs. In Military Road, this entire summer, since today's my first day of school, this entire summer, I've been going to Military Road a lot, and I always met about, I met about four homeless people who I knew them, and I gave them food time to time. I was hanging out with them. They were cool guys. But recently, around, I want to say, two days ago, I was driving back from the fair. I noticed there were about 11 homeless people, and it was just insane. And so, the next day, I walked around and I saw homeless people doing drugs around, near the exit of Walgreens, behind the pharmacy. About four people, homeless people, were just doing drugs right there. Nothing was happening, nothing. And then, that same day, I went to the Commons Mall with my father. We went to Chase Bank, and there was a homeless man, clearly on drugs, holding a knife and waiting for someone to get into the ATM and attack them or rob them. I have a video of him, not very well, though. I have a video of my father trying to get money out of his bank account while a homeless man over there was just acting crazy right next to him the entire time. He even tried to rob my father's car despite my father, even though he's a crazy man himself, he knew what's going on and he drove away. Even though he, even though he said he would call the police, but first, he would make sure he used the Second Amendment and shoot him in case that anything happens. So, today, I ask you, not only as a concerned citizen, but as a teenager, as a youth citizen who's very concerned about his own health, his own safety, to please do something. The council members and you, Jim, even though I know you, I'm asking you, please do something and help Military Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Suzanne Vargo. Oh, that's right. All right, thank you very much. Okay, and we have a comment online. We've got Brenda Mababu. Is Brenda still on the line?
She was, Mayor, but she dropped.
Oh, shoot. Okay. Okay, Chief, can you talk to us about the East Wind Motel and what's going on there?
Yes, Mayor. East Wind is under new ownership. They've been there about a month. They plan on shutting down East Wind Motel for a period of two months, starting October 1st, to remodel. And they also want to build a gate on Pack Highway so there isn't free flow of people walking in and out of the establishment. They have about 25 years of motel hotel experience. They're from Tacoma. So, they're, they're wanting to, we've been working with them. We've also done undercover operations, arrested some drug dealers out of the establishment. And we've been doing periodic surveillance and removing people, particularly on Pack Highway, on Pacific Highway, but it's been a challenge. It's been a challenge particularly with the new law, that we have to give two warnings, and then third could be a misdemeanor. But most individuals are pretty savvy. They refuse to cooperate with officers and generally just walk away. We're, we have made some, we have given some warnings. We've had, made some arrests, but it's been a challenge, but we're, I think, on the right path with the new ownership wanting to clean up the place.
All right, thank you very much.
What's the bill number for that law with the three warnings? Do you remember what the bill number is?
I'm sorry, what was?
Do you remember what the bill number is for the law on the three warnings?
Well, first, it came with a Blake decision. So, with that, as a city, with the policy group, Mayor and Council, we recommended that the word knowingly be put back into the law.
Right, yeah.
That was that.
But that was not.
And then, we created our ordinance, drug ordinance, to deal with that, but the state preempted that and said, "The cities can't do that." So, this was a new law. I don't remember the House bill.
Okay, thanks. If you find it, could you just let me know?
Oh, sure. It's a state law.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then, Chief, can you, or it was, or maybe John knows, Mr. Ross talked about theft of city property or park property that included his property. Can you tell us about that?
I don't know anything about it, but Mr. Ross or the city could certainly even file the theft report online, but if a report comes to us, we will certainly document the incident from the police department perspective.
John, do you know?
I am unaware, but I can talk to Jim if he's still here and find out what you're talking about.
Yes. Yeah, if you could, maybe in the back, maybe in the back of the room, you could find that out. Let's, and let's not do an online. Let's just make sure that we get a, let's, whoever, whatever staff person was involved, let's draft out a statement and report that. Let's, and then I'd like to figure out what's, what happened. Great, thank you very much. Okay, Anna Patrick. What's that? Oh, of course, yes. Actually, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I will, actually, at the last, at the next meeting, Stephanie, let's make sure, since this has been discussed at this meeting, we'll follow up in regard to that. And Chief, let's also talk about, as Juan talked about, about the situation at Military Road and 288th. Let's discuss that as well. Okay, Anna.
Good evening, everyone. So, I just wanted, it just popped into my head tonight, today at the King County meeting, the general meeting, I don't know if you got my email, but some of you I know did. They talked about the implementation plan of the Restorative Community Pathways Program, and it's gotten worse. Now, according to their plan, they don't require anybody that's being referred to actually participate. They just wait until they're ready. And so, they'll wait as long as it takes to participate if they choose. And so, as some of you are aware, some of these offenses include bringing a gun to school, robbery, organized theft, I think, some other serious crimes.
Resident?
I just, I would like to know what the city is doing to push back on this with the start of school and everything. I have concerns about the safety in our city, in our community, because we are the hardest-hit community from this program. I've also sent an email about the tax-exempt properties that are being built here. I think that Federway is getting a larger portion of the tax-exempt properties, which I think is, is not equitable to Federway, and I'm not sure what we're going to do about that, but I think we should be pushing back on that as well and advocating for other types of options for our city so that there's balance. And I guess that's all I'm going to say. Thank you. And, oh, one more thing. I did send an email about the hotel as well, and I hope you got that.
We did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anna. And thank you very much for your update in regard to RCP. We are in receipt of the report that was provided and to the King County Council, and we're going to be digging into it, but more to follow in regard to our position. Thank you. Thomas, there seems to be something going on with the microphone. Do you know what's going on? Oh, okay. Oh, okay, very good. Okay, I think Brenda has joined us back online.
She is, Mayor.
Ms. Mababu?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So, I just wanted to give a little update on the work that we're doing here at Virginia Mason-Francoise Health with the Youth Violence Prevention Initiative. We haven't been able to join these meetings within this last few months, so I just wanted to recap on the kind of things that we're doing. We had a resource fair at the Park 16 Apartments on June 25th, and that was to address the gang violence and gun shootings that were taking place at that apartment complex, and that was following after Progress Pushers had an event also towards reducing gun violence at that apartment complex. We also supported the Multiservice Center to host another resource fair on July 29th that was geared toward teens who are entering into, who are re-entering into the community after incarceration and have been historically underserved. And this coming Sunday, we will be hosting a back-to-school block party with, with the goal of reaching out to our youth, as well as there will be speakers who will be talking about violence prevention and positive ways of addressing stress. So, I just wanted to keep that update. We did finish off fiscal year in June, and we are now in the 2022 to 2023 fiscal year of funding. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, and thank you for the work you do. Okay, that concludes. Is there anybody else who'd like to provide public comment? Thank you very much. And also, during my Mayor's Emerging Issues Report, I failed to note the recent Rotary event that raised over $27,000 for neighborhood programs for for neighborhood programs, for children's programs in our community. It was Speed Croquet over there at Ilahi Junior High. I got great reports about it, and we'd like to thank the Rotary for their service to the community. Okay, now, moving on to presentations, we've got a proclamation or Constitution Week, and I'll turn it over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you. Would Sue Walker go to the podium? Is Sue Walker here? Oh, can you, if you can step to the podium, I will read the proclamation and bring it to you, and then you can speak after I hand you the proclamation. Thank you. Whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas Public Law Number 915, signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th as Constitution Day. Whereas celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution as we preserve, serve it for posterity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events, which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2022, to be Constitution Week in Federal Way. We ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 and reflect on our heritage of freedom. Signed this 6th day of September, 2022.
On behalf of the Lakota chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we thank you for recognizing our Constitution Week proclamation. This year's Constitution Week commemorates the 235th anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution. It's the oldest constitution still in active use in the world today and is the basic document for our republic. American colonists fought, sacrificed, and died to establish and preserve freedoms now guaranteed to us by the Constitution. It is fitting that we take this anniversary to reflect and honor this document and those who wrote it. You might have heard the phrase, "That's unconstitutional," or "That's my constitutional right." Many times, Americans believe that sayings and phrases are part of our Constitution, but they really aren't. Let us celebrate Constitution Week by resolving to be better informed and responsible citizens. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody who's ever been to Philadelphia and walked in Independence Hall, actually, the hall is smaller than these chambers is right now, and it's just a very historic, oh, well, thank you. A very historic, if you haven't had a chance to visit Independence Hall, I would highly encourage you to do so. All right, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Okay. All right, now we've got a proclamation for National Recovery Month. Councilmember Sephard Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Jamie Lee, who I met in the elevator, to walk up, step up to the podium while I read. Jamie Lee is the Behavioral Health Provider Relations Specialist with King County Behavioral Health and Recovery Division. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had and continues to have a profound effect on mental health and substance use with increasing numbers of people experiencing anxiety, depression, and loneliness, and whereas an estimated 575,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental health and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles for individuals, families, and entire communities, and whereas connection and community are critical components of recovery in our local areas and across the nation, and whereas we must encourage relatives, friends, and neighbors of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas prevention of mental health and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and recovery is possible. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, ONDCP, King County, and the City of Federal Way invite all residents to participate in recognizing National Recovery Month. And now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month and call upon the people of Federal Way to observe this month with programs and activities to support National Recovery Month. Signed this 6th day of September, 2022. So please go ahead and share any statement while I come down to give you the proclamation.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Lee, and I have been a Federal Way resident since 1998. I work for King County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Division as part of the Provider Relations and Contracts Team. On behalf of King County and the Behavioral Health and Recovery Division and the citizens of Federal Way who are in recovery from mental health and substance use challenges, I thank you for your leadership and for proclaiming September 2022 as National Recovery Month. Recovery Month provides us an opportunity to bring awareness to the thriving recovery community in King County. We know that people are recovering from mental health and substance use issues every day. In fact, over 20 million Americans are in recovery at this very moment. Recovery Month gives us an opportunity to recognize the compassionate and dedicated mental health and substance use service providers and community members who make recovery in all its forms possible. By proclaiming September as the National Recovery Month, you are helping end the stigma around behavioral health challenges that can lead to individuals and families feeling isolated and alone. You are helping share the message that this year's Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. Thank you, Mayor Farrell and honorable council members for acknowledging and celebrating Recovery Month.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Okay, now we've got City of Federal Way Regional Labor Study, Dr. Ali Modaris, University of Washington Tacoma.
Mayor Farrell, council members, thank you for including me in your agenda. Before I dive into this study, I wanted to ask a question. This is a bit long of a presentation and lots of numbers and charts. I understand it is kind of late, so if you still want me to present, I will, but if you want me to come back at another time, I can do that as well. It's totally up to you. It's okay for me to go ahead?
Well, when we say, doctor, how long do you think?
It's about 20 minutes of the presentation itself.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, this was included at this session where we.
Yeah, maybe you can, you know, maybe.
I can give you the punchlines without going through the charts. How's that?
Let's shoot for 10 to 15.
Well, actually, I can do it shorter than that and be done with that one, and then I can come back if you want me to go over the details.
All right, thank you.
So basically, this analysis, which you have, I have provided you with the charts for it, takes a look at two things. One is the current state of the economy in City of Federal Way, and where the job growth and what are the areas in which we are seeing over the last five years some growth in Federal Way? And then there are a series of charts and pieces of information that talks about job postings and analysis of job postings in City of Federal Way. Two different things, two different trajectories. The first one essentially shows you that the growth that we are seeing in City of Federal Way not only has followed what are your strong sectors, which government is one of them. Government, in fact, includes schools and everybody who gets a state or local check, a paycheck. That area is growing, but also in growth areas, you have areas like retail. It's growing, but not really as fast as it used to. But the one area in which it's small but is disproportionately growth is in the information area. That's very unique. That essentially means that City of Federal Way is now building a workforce that specifically is ready for the next phase of its economic development. The challenge of that is the following. As you begin to think about your economy, there's a bifurcation. There are two parts to it. There seems to be a growth of high-income categories, and then there are the low-income categories, which means the community is splitting in terms of their wages. So that's one of the things that I was going to recommend that City of Federal Way keeps track of, how your economy is splitting in that area. The reason this is important is that any city that wants to function as a livable city, it has to be a place where people live, work, and play. You know, those three things that are important, which essentially means that even if you attract population, still the service economy is needed. However, the sort of jobs that are in service economy, pandemic has shown us that they are vulnerable, meaning that if you look at unemployment filing for the state of Washington, one of the first jobs to disappear one by one, and then in large numbers, were in food services and accommodations. And that's one area that actually City of Federal Way is seeing a much slower return. We are seeing this nationally. Nationally, a large number of people who were in that industry are beginning to shift out because the wages are not good and the job is not for sure. So that's one part to keep track of. However, for a city to be functional, it needs both the income earners and the service providers, the sort of functionality that happens together. In terms of the job postings, we are seeing the same thing. Now, I just want to make sure that the data that you're looking at, you know where it comes from. There's a company called EMSI, was called EMSI, which we call MZ in Economic Development Analysis. That company combined with Burning Glass, and now they're called Lightcast. Burning Glass used to collect job posting information for every region in the United States. I have acquired the Federal Way data, so the second part of the presentation that you're seeing is for job postings. The trajectory for job postings for City of Federal Way is quite strong, so we are seeing more and more, especially in the second year of the pandemic. The data that you are presented goes through the year 2021. However, the chart that I have provided you with the component that looks at the trajectory goes all the way through the first quarter of this year. So essentially, what you're looking at is the pattern of job posting. And I want you to pay attention to something very specific. One is that in the area in which we are seeing systematically now cities competing for, especially in this region, is nursing. Nursing seems to be one area that cities in this region are competing for, which essentially means you have to import the labor for that one. It's not that you don't have the industry. The second part that you have to think about in terms of job postings is that information sector and higher earning sectors, unlike many cities in region, you're getting more of the postings for those jobs, which means the higher income groups are gradually coming to Federal Way. That means that the next phase of urban development needs to take a look at that as well, and you need to keep track of the wages and wage structures within the city as that begins to pan out. Retail probably will be on the slower side, and one of the suggestions that I have made in the report to you is that you might want to think about land use and how land use would accommodate new economy that's emerging in City of Federal Way. This city has an enviable geographic location. We are delighted to be in the hub, as I met your mayor in there. UDT will be there, and so will be Highline. Higher Ed is going to provide the support. However, as we begin to move into the future, you might want to begin to think about what happens to all the graduates of these programs. What happens as we begin to have more and more people come into this? The one last advice that I provided a little bit before the meeting I want to make is here. Every city should focus on loving the people that they have already and not try to love people who are going to come. So that's really important to begin to think about also simultaneously, what happens to this region if everything we do is focused on real estate development to attract other people to this area, and what that really means to the local residents. Also, as you begin to think about services of the future for the city and how the city would look like, begin to think about it this way. There is Seattle, there is Bellevue, there is Renton, and Federal Way with a new transit hub that it's going to have is going to be an amazing location for competition, both for economic development and labor development. I'm going to stop at that. This is a summary of what those, all those charts mean. I'm happy to go over them with you at a different time because there's lots in that information that requires detailed discussions. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor, then Council President.
I am happy to provide it.
First of.
Yeah, I will, I'm happy to provide it. Where's Brian? It's in the packet, right? Can that be provided?
There was a question of how the public can access it, and it's in the council packet that is online. But we can connect with you anyway, just to send it to you.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much, doctor, for coming and staying through our presentations. I have two questions. One is maybe he could come back to a FedRock meeting and present at a FedRock meeting. And, which is a council committee meeting. We meet on the 4th Tuesday of the month, but we can connect with you about that. And secondly, we are building, well, light rail is coming. We're not building it, but it's coming. And we've been talking to developers who are interested in building housing around light rail so that people can live here but get on light rail and go out to work somewhere else. What do you think about that?
Okay. A lot of cities that get transit stations, that's the first thing they begin to think about, essentially how to build housing around the stations. From a transportation development perspective, that's really important. From transit-oriented development, that's really important. But mixed land use is much more important. So what you really need to be thinking about is that what they would do. I heard tonight from different presentations that there would be small businesses, that there will be public market that needs to be supported. All of that needs to be taken into account. So you can, cities can no longer afford to have one area where everybody lives and another area that does something else. It's sort of a mixing of that is important. Otherwise, what would happen is a self-fulfilling philosophy. Essentially means that if you build just real estate around the stations, that's how, who you're going to get. In the morning, they will get on the train to go work elsewhere, and in the afternoon, they come back. In the slides that I have sent you, there is a table in which tells you what's called a net commuter. And that essentially means where you have a lot of labor, specific skills that you are not using, they're leaving City of Federal Way to go somewhere else to work, and then areas in which people are coming to work in City of Federal Way. I think that data needs to be looked at, and I'm happy to come to sessions to talk to you about ways in which to incorporate that into the development of the city that accommodates the local residents as well as the new residents who don't turn this place or this station area into a bedroom community.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Council President, and then Councilmember Sephard Austin.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what the Growth Management Act was trying to tell us to distance 1999, and we've been fighting against that so that we're not the bedroom community where they leave. They need to stay here and work. And so two of the needs that you're talking about, and I already suspected that, was the nursing surrounding our hospitals, because we have a really good Virginia Mason, St. Francis.
Absolutely.
Complex. But you also mentioned information sector, and that's one of the groups that we do want to attract. And how would you suggest that, do we, do we want to have a hub around where people would be technology? Because they like to group together, or are they? Or are they going to be working from their homes? What are you suggesting in that?
So for them, basically, the idea of having an ecosystem that they function in, because if you look at the way tech sector has always worked, is that they have co-locations and they come to those. For the case of Federal Way, there's also the added benefit of close proximity. So there could be some potential connectivity to other cities where that happens. But the area that I want to focus on or recommend for you to think about, this is just a recommendation. If you combine information and health, you've got yourself a very specialized tech sector that focuses on medical issues. And that's something that could be the brand for City of Federal Way. City of Federal Way could begin to think about not just any tech sector, but tech sector that focuses on healthcare and perhaps even education in some ways to facilitate the growth of other parts of its economy.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and your report was really comprehensive. And I appreciate, and there's a lot to learn from that also. But my question is, well, first of all, Federal Way, we say we're centered on opportunity. So this really helps us develop that and go towards that. My question, two questions. One is, was there chamber involvement when you were doing this? Or were they part of it? Or if I were to look to-
Just basically, we were asked to do a labor analysis for the region.
So you didn't consult them in this-
No, this is purely data that we are looking at that comes from the private sector that is collected in a regularly quarterly basis.
Okay, thank you. And then with the questionnaires, if we were to send those out, for instance, and ask our residents, you know, the questions, and then there's a sector that talks about what sector do you work in, I believe? And one thing I didn't see, well, there is a public service, right? Or actual public administration is what it says. Would government be under public administration? Okay.
Yeah, the survey that you're referring to is the survey that was supposed to go out, but there wasn't any really a high number of responses to be able to analyze that.
So if we were to send it out again?
Happy to analyze it whenever you have the data.
Thank you. And then something that I saw missing, and I don't know how to address this. We do have a lot of religious institutions or churches in our area or in our city. Where do those fit into this job sector?
Social services. They fall typically under social services, if they have the specific functions that they play. But if they are not-
As employees.
Yeah, as employees, they would be under other category.
Employer, employee, okay.
It's so small.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think those were my questions. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Well, Doctor, thank you very much for your work and your presentation. We very much appreciate it, and also your sensitivity to the lateness of the hour. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Okay, now we'll have an update from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Analyst, Kia McGlon.
Good evening. Just bear with me one minute. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Kia McGlon. I've had the pleasure of meeting a handful of you, but not the others. So I'm really happy to be here. Just a little bit about myself. I am a Federal Way resident. I've been here over 15 years. Followed my mother and brother here. I'm number eight out of nine children. My family history is my father is a Vietnam War vet, which led us to Seattle, Washington, and then south here to Federal Way. I've had over 25 years of social service experience. That includes human services, education as my background. So I've always worked in South King County has always been my jurisdiction with the state. But it was more with our Medicaid clients. So that's a bulk of my history with work history. So I'm very happy to share just a little snapshot of what I've been working on since I was hired in March. Tomorrow will mark my sixth month here. So here we go. As your DEI analyst, I have been collaborating a lot with staff internally and community externally. Here are some of the accomplishments we've worked on and completed together. With our Public Works Department, in month April, I helped draft and execute our Title VI Annual Report to WASDOT. We received our compliance approval letter in July with no remedies to fix. So that was a really good accomplishment, working in partnership with Public Works. We are partnering again with Public Works. I've also helped them with community engagement and just consult with their neighborhood traffic safety program and outreach to our communities. In a little over one month, we have four community engagements to share this very important revision and proposal for Neighborhood Safety Traffic Program. First one was our quarterly Korean Community Meeting in late June. The next was presenting to our Diversity Commission, end of July. The next was presenting to our Sikh community, end of July as well, very close at their house of worship. On a Sunday morning, Rick Perez and I attended that. And then recently, lastly, was with our quarterly African-American community with FedRock Black Collective. So those four groups were four different community engagement events, just talking solely about Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. Next, and what I'm most proud of, is our collaboration and community engagement with our Sikh community. They actually reached out to me in early August because they wanted to have a community service event with the City of Federal Way specifically to commemorate the deadly shooting that happened in Wisconsin 10 years ago at Oak Creek, their house of worship, where they were attacked by a hate crime. And so that was the most deadly attack. And they reached out to myself. And very quickly and swiftly, I reached out to our Parks and Rec Director, John, who worked an amazing lightning speed. John, I didn't know that you were going on vacation. So I sense a little stress, but then you put me in good hands with Jason and your staff. And I have some good pictures to show you about that. And once again, this is the first time the Sikh community has reached out to the city. So I'm very proud with the mayor's support and community development that we were able to have a very positive, meaningful engagement with them. Coming up very soon this month, we will have a citywide training on our Language Line telephonic services for the city. This is minus the police and the court department because they already utilize Language Line. This will now just be accessible to the rest of the city. This service has languages, over 250 languages available to all staff inside and outside of City Hall, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. We will have access to telephonic interpretation on our desk phones and also on our work cell. There will be a cell phone app. Training is being scheduled as we speak. Soon as I have that finalized, we will have a citywide email to announce it so directors can assign appropriate staff to take that. And also, we have ongoing for myself, which has been extremely beneficial and rewarding for myself, is community and staff engagement. That is something that I always welcome. That is something that I look forward to because every person I've spoken to, whether it's a question or concern, always births an idea and collaboration. So now I'm going to show you some really colorful pictures so you can see the work that took place on August 12. So as you see here, we have Steel Lake Community Partnership in Action. The staff you see here on the far right, upper right, is Tony Collins. Him by himself came up with this idea under direction and support of his director and deputy director. Now, what you will see is young people at the bottom. Those young men are high schoolers. So they are high schoolers that came with their parents to contribute in community services for just City of Federal Way for that one special day. You will see different people from different ages, different physical abilities. And all this focus was led under Tony. You see there our Diversity Commissioner, Chair Rogers, Commissioner Ida Hosa, and like I said, plenty of young people and their parents working together. These workers, as you can see here, were shoveling heavy gravel up a slope. So this was not easy work, and we all finished it together in less than three hours. We have a finished product. You have safer, more visible trail that leads all the way up to the community behind Steel Lake Park. So ongoing, we have our Diversity Commission Retreat, our annual retreat planned and confirmed at Dumas Bay, September 24th, which is a Saturday. 10 to 3 or 10 to 4, it's open to, of course, you all here and the public. There will be pub, I will definitely solicit up information and recruitment and make sure the public is well aware. I'm also partnering with our IT team right now as we speak because I want to know what our demographic is currently. I want to know where our ethnic groups reside based on race, income, veteran status, senior status, disability, and where our limited English proficiency community members all reside. If they're clustered, if they're not, this will help everybody, whether it's with future community engagement, Public Works, future projects. It will help everybody. I'm also working very closely with Sarah Bridford, and we are researching tools and researched just different methods of how to further fair housing in our city and help prevent discrimination. We are, as council members, we, I do staff the Duris to commission. So I'm working with them right now to work on our new work plan so that it would be ready for your review this November for next year's work plan. I am split between the Community Development Department and Public Works as their Title VI Coordinator. And this is to just basically be another set of eyes to help increase equity in their future projects and help them with community engagement and community education. And ongoing with the Diversity Commission, we are planning and partnering, of course, with the Federal Way School District, Dr. Martin Luther King Day for January 16th, 2023. So that's ongoing right now and just started the planning process. And also with the Diversity Commission is the Flavor FedRock planning for the next year, August 2023. So with all that said, I'm very happy to be here because I live here. So my investment is very deep. I am a mom of two children. And regardless of how late or how soon I've joined the team, I'm always going to be involved regardless. So I'm here to help everyone internally and externally. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to take that.
Thank you, Kia. Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Kia. This is amazing. We really appreciate all the work that you've done in the short amount of time that you've been here. My question is with the JIS IT assistance. I really appreciate, especially the language access because I think it's very important that, because Federal Way has so many languages spoken and we don't have access to them. And also with that, hopefully, people understand that they have access to City Hall or to us because a lot of times, as immigrants, we don't understand that clearly. We're, I mean, it's like hierarchical, something that is not even accessible. So I think this will allow people to express themselves. And if they can't come, they can, you know, do it in different ways. So I appreciate that you're able to open that door for people to be a part of the community, I mean, a part of the city and help us be more inclusive. So thank you. But with the, my question with the IT, JIS IT assistance, is there a way to also add where minority-owned businesses are? Or in particular, like either immigrant and/or just the small businesses, mom-and-pop businesses? Is there a way to include that in this, or is that a huge ask?
I don't know if that's capturedincenses.gov, but I can look into that. That's a good question.
Okay, really appreciate it. Thank you so much, though.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Honda.
I just want to thank you and welcome you again. And I'm glad you're part of the team here, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you're doing a great work. Thank you very much, Kia. Great presentation, too.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now we've got an update regarding King County Grant for Small Businesses and Community Groups Impacted by COVID-19. Sarah Bridford, our Community Services Manager.
Good evening there, Feral members of the council. It's great to be here tonight. I want to provide a brief update and some changes that have happened. So you won't see a contract tonight. You'll see that at a later time. This grant funding is funding that was given, you were given an overview in April, and council voted to accept those funds in April of this year. And originally, King County had the funding through their ARPA allocation. They were going to provide $100,000 to the City of Federal Way to focus on small businesses and social services or nonprofit work. Since then, they've been able to provide that funding through their general fund. So it will remove some of the federal requirements that we look at and know that that adds a layer of complexity for use of those funds. They're going to provide it with general fund. It will still have a COVID tieback. We don't know what those details for compliance will be. We do anticipate having a contract from King County by the end of December. So you'll have that contract come before council along with contracts for use of those funds as appropriate. It's anticipated that all funds will need to be spent within the first quarter of 2023. So it's a really quick turnaround. We're looking at, you know, roughly three months to have any project complete. The current proposal that was developed in discussion with the mayor's office and the county exec is to provide funding to childcare providers as well as addressing housing stability of residents. This is in alignment with the original parameters submitted to King County in 2021. So the city had to complete a brief survey that went to the county, I guess, to request the funds. This addresses a couple experiences in the community with childcare providers. We're seeing closures of childcare providers, lower capacity due to safe operation and increased cost. Similarly, with eviction and housing stability, we're seeing high rates of expressed need from providers. The Housing Justice Project, I can provide a dashboard later, but on their dashboard, you'll see that the 98023 and 98003 ZIP codes are second and third of the ZIP codes in King County for filings during the pandemic, most of which happened after the eviction moratorium ended. The proposal is to use the grant funds in the following way. $75,000 to childcare resources to administer and provide financial grants to childcare providers focusing on retention of in-home child family care providers in the city, targeting the 98003 ZIP code. It is the ZIP code that has the lowest family median income. Eligible providers will participate in early achievers and accept working connections childcare subsidy. They currently provide technical assistance, and that's, again, childcare resources. They provide technical assistance to providers with other funding so that would couple with this funding to really look at that retention and how we can support our providers. Any applicant for the funds would identify how the funds would support their business, including a narrative on lost revenue, which is one of the requirements that we anticipate from King County, and then potential uses of the funds for current costs, how they might also support families with those funds. The remaining $25,000 is proposed to go to El Centro de la Raza to provide housing stability services. They would be able to do that without charging any staff time and would distribute the funds to support households in Federal Way who are facing eviction or utility cutoff. We know that both of those lead to our housing stability in the community. In some other cases, they would like to be able to consider items like gas vouchers if a household was able to pay their rent or utility after having faced eviction and have offset other costs that are leading to like job insecurities. So it all ties together. And that is the current proposal that we're just presenting at a high level tonight. And I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions for Sarah? Councilmember Norton.
Sarah, thank you so much for your hard work, and I really appreciate your presentation. That's all. I don't have questions. Just thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Sephardos, and then Councilmember Doby.
Thank you. With childcare resources, the childcare providers that they serve are licensed childcare providers, correct?
That is correct.
And if anyone calls from 98023, would they still be, get assistance? Or are we, are they only focusing on the 98003 with the $75,000?
Their proposal, in, in talking to them about where the, the greatest use, because it is, $75,000 sounds like a lot that when it's divided across a lot of providers, they really felt that a deeper grant was more important and that the 98003 ZIP code is the ZIP code where childcare providers and families are at greatest, greatest risk. So they recommend that at the ZIP code eligibility.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, that is ARPA fund, although it's general, it went into their general fund pocket? So it doesn't go through us at all, right? Or how does it work?
It would come through us. In this case, King County will provide a contract to the city, and it would operate on a reimbursement basis. So there would be two layers there. We would receive the contract from King County, contract with the two subrecipients. They would request reimbursement. We would pay and then request reimbursement from the county.
So it's just a normal human service process that we go through. Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for the hard that you provide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Doby.
Just a clarifying question. I mean, any money that comes to help our citizens is great news. This money that's going to go to the organizations or the daycares, it's going to be a straight pass-through. There's not going to be expenses that the organization has to give it out. I heard you say that 100% of the money will go to the, what I call the end user, the person that's facing eviction or somebody who needs health, not healthcare, but daycare services. Is that correct?
They will actually charge a little bit. They'll be coupling that and expanding on the technical assistance and then the administration of this process.
And who will be charging that?
Childcare resources, so to administer it, and then the rest will go to the childcare providers.
I mean, could we go another way instead of having somebody that does it for a business and get it directly to the consumer that needs it?
It would, it would provide about one additional grant potentially. I can ask if they're willing to provide their data. We don't have staffing otherwise.
Okay. And what percentage do they withhold for their part of the, to administer it?
We are not at the point of having a complete budget just because we don't yet know the parameters from King County in terms of what requirements they're going to have, which is the other piece of this, that having an agency do that is beneficial.
Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering my name. Thank you for being here. So does the childcare funding, does that help the, the families get the childcare? I, so does, or does it go to the provider to provide services and then the families still pay for those services?
It is actually to offset the cost of the pandemic and the impact on the business aspect of the childcare provider. When we're looking at childcare providers, we see that as an intersection between our economic development and social services, especially when focusing on those providers that do accept the, the Working Connections Childcare subsidy. But this is actually, that program in particular is about the, the business itself. And as part of the application, childcare resources would propose asking if the providers intend to use portions of that to support families. So it could be things like purchase of diapers and formula that are required that the family provide. But generally, that is actually a business support program as submitted to King County.
So I, I know early in the pandemic, we provided, I think, CARES funding for childcare providers. So this is in addition to that. Would it be, because we have those companies still on record, we know where they're at, or we know that they were there, would they be able to apply for this funding too? If they applied for the funding before?
Yes. Yeah. There would not be a restriction on receiving one or the other. It's, we anticipate that with the King County funding that they will come back and want at least some level of data around lost revenue of the business. So they'll have to make that justification. With our grant funding, it was specifically a reimbursement. So they had to show that they had incurred the expenses and, and we paid for that. So they should be covering two separate costs, so to speak.
So just to clarify for me, what exactly would the business use this money for in their business? Besides buying, hopefully buying diapers and formula and wipes? Would it be educational materials or is it for staffing?
They can identify. Very technically, King County and what was submitted to King County would call this a, like a lost revenue, which would essentially like, you know, cover those, kind of like what the city did with ARPA, where we were able to get that funding. So then we're asking providers, how are you going to use these funds? Because it's a loss in revenue that's already happened. They've made it this far. So then it's how are you going to use this to move forward? And they'll provide that information. It may be all the things that you just talked about. But at this time in the current proposal, there is not a specific requirement around a specific category.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Council, any other, any other comments? Sarah, great, great work as usual. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Actually, I know that we've got, before we go any further, we have hit just about, we're two minutes before the 8:30 hour, and I know that we've got folks that are hanging out for the ARPA discussion. Councilmember W, did you have a motion with regard to the ARPA discussion?
Yeah, I, I actually do, just from listening to all the testimony tonight and one organization saying, hey, we don't want to take money and hearing about daycare, and two of our members are not here tonight. And this is a really, really big decision. I know some of the council members have some great things that they'd like to recommend. I personally, if I could make the motion and get a second, would like to postpone the ARPA discussion so that we can have everyone here, we can be very, very thoughtful, and we're not building things at the dais. I mean, there's certain things on there that could need to get going. But we've heard a lot of information tonight that would change my idea of how we would spend the money. So I would, if somebody would second it, I'd like to move that we move the ARPA discussion to another meeting.
Second.
Okay. It's been a motion and a second. All right. It sounds like, I think we're going to have everybody weigh in on this. Okay, there's been a motion and a second and for discussion. Let's start and just walk our way down. Councilmember Sephardos.
I'd like for us to continue. One, I won't be here next week, and I really want to be part of this conversation, next meeting, I mean. I really want to be part of this conversation. And also, we do have another heavy thing on the agenda for next time, don't we?
Zoning.
Zoning. So I think it will be a long meeting. And then secondly, people have been waiting, and this is the second time I think they've been waiting for this. So I'd like to continue.
Okay. So Councilmember Norton, would you like to speak to your, to your second at all?
I was just backing up Jack.
Okay. Very good. Deputy Mayor, do you have a motion?
I am concerned that we're pulling this at the last minute. Again, we did that at the last meeting. And if we're going to have all council members here, which I think is a great idea, and I support that, I think we need to make a plan is to get all council members here. And we know that I won't be at the next meeting because Councilmember Sephardos will be at a, at a work event. So I think if we at least start a discussion, but, you know, on the other hand, we, we are missing two council members. I understand Councilmember Walsh lost his connection, and Councilmember Tran cannot get a connection. So I, I, I feel like we should perhaps start the discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Council President.
There's no urgency. I don't see an urgency. There's three years for us to spend the money. I want to do it appropriately. I want to make sure that we're very, very thoughtful in our deliberations. And I'm, I'm very concerned. I mean, I think we need to have all of our council members. We're having a problem with Zoom meetings. We need to discuss that. We need, if we expect our employees to be here, we need to expect our council members to be present to discuss the important business of our city. And I, I literally, so I, I would like to postpone the discussion until all seven council members are here, ready to deliberate.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember W, did you wish to speak to your motion?
Well, yeah, I made the motion. One, this is, we're going to be putting the footprint on a lot of money in the city. We have tremendous needs for human services. We have tremendous needs for everybody that's been sitting here, that's been coming to us. But I think we're, as a council, we can't do it with only five of us sitting here, two not on the internet, not on Zoom. There's some great ideas that council members have talked about. I want to support having a really open meeting where we really can really debate it. And so I would ask that we vote to postpone it.
A point of personal privilege, actually, Brian, did you have a?
I just have a suggestion. In all the discussions that I've had with the full council and at the ad hoc committee, there's been unanimity on the $3 million for social services. And it seems like a lot of the comments that we get are regarding social services. And in order for the city to develop an application, we need that, it helps to have that funding approved. So if there's a desire to at least approve that, that, and move that forward, that would help. And the council can add to it later. It doesn't have to be that amount, but just a suggestion.
Well, we're missing a couple of council members. That's not actually part of the, part of the motion, but thank you. Councilmember Norton and then the Deputy Mayor.
Okay. So I think it's important that, that we do move forward with the public safe, that's funny, with the, with the community, the community funding because we're in a position right now where we can make a difference in a lot of people's lives if we could release that funding as soon as possible. I'm also concerned with the first category, public safety, that it's not actually public safety. And we need to, we need to just nix it, make it go away, and add that funding to the community because they're in need right now. There are, we're looking at record. People are being evicted from their homes. If we can save people who are on the, on the verge of homelessness, and if you think about what we could do and affect hundreds, perhaps 50,000 people's lives, and, and not just low income, we can go to middle-income people because everyone is struggling right now. People are choosing between paying their rent or eating. They're choosing, and I've, I am talking to a lot of people in our community, and it's not just low income. It's middle-income people as well. So I think we really need to divert those funds. I'm, okay, I make a motion.
We already have one on the table.
Okay. Can I add to Jack's motion then? That, that we divert the funding from public safety and add it to the community, the community section?
I'm not sure that's a.
Man, I don't think those two motions are compatible.
Yeah. So what we.
The motion on the floor is right now to postpone the item indefinitely.
Well, if we're going to talk about it, then I'll just make my own motion then.
Okay. So yeah, but right now, we can, we can revisit another motion. Right now, we, we can come back to that. Right now, the issue is, and, and right now, to my understanding, is the majority is three. Is that correct? You voted three? It's the majority of those present.
That's right.
I'm sorry. So Deputy Mayor.
So if, if this is voted in a positive to not continue with the discussion tonight, I would like any council members, if you would be willing to share with the rest of us your ideas, just send them in an email to us. And also, let us know when you, you won't be at a meeting so we can get this scheduled and get it where all seven of us will be here.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Doby.
I want to say, I guess I want to say one other thing. I agree with Erica that this money needs to go to the community, and it needs to go majority to human services, and it needs to majority go to some of the infrastructure things like fixing the HVAC and things like that that we have to do. So I am totally on 100%. That's where most of this money needs to go to. But we haven't done kind of the vetting process, and I don't know, you send applications out. I don't know where that all goes, but I agree with what Councilmember Norton says, that this money needs to go to the people that live in Federal Way that are, I don't care what their economic standard is, because everybody's got the same. Many problems with what's happening with inflation, what's happening with jobs. We heard some great things from the geographer who came in from U-Dub about how we have to be thoughtful about what we're going to do with our downtown. And there's a whole bunch of things that we could be doing that are real creative. And that's why I would like to postpone it so we can really galvanize how we're going to be spending this money for the most 100,000 people in this community so we keep people in their homes, we feed the people that need to be fed, we develop our downtown so people will want to move here and build here so we can actually have a tax base. And this, we have one time as a council to spend, whatever these millions of dollars are, that we have time to think about it. That's why I want to postpone it.
All right. Councilmember Sephardos.
Yeah. Okay. I will go ahead and agree then if we have to postpone, and you're right, so I can make my comment. But one thing I would like to correct, and I think that's what Josiah also said earlier, is that, that column is not public safety, it's public health and economic impacts. And so I think we need to be careful how we classify that because it's not about public safety. But also, when we're talking about economic impacts, we, we saw the presentation. It's very important that, to keep some of that money there. So I definitely, that would be my comment, that if I write an email or whatever, because I don't want that to go away completely. And also around economic impacts, we've heard from the Federal Way public market. They could probably go under that category, so I would definitely leave it alone. Not, I mean, not all of it. I, I'm not saying all, 1 million. But that's a column I would still keep in place. But I totally support the community and human services to be increased and, and provide services to our communities for, for sure. So that would be my input. So if we postpone it, I'm open to it with the understanding that that would be something I want to make sure it's, it's still in place. And then we increase the community, social, what is it, social services support, which is definitely near and dear to my heart. And let's not lose sight of businesses that are impacted, and let's still support them. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Norton.
Thank you. I just want to say that I feel like this was kind of sprung on us as a city council. On, a minority took it upon themselves to put this together and then brought it here and said, well, this is what, you know, what we think should happen. And we have not had, I want people to understand, we have not had any discussions about this as a full city council. We were just shown, well, this is what we want to do, and surprise, we're giving money to our friends, and, and the rest of it's getting, you know, a little tiny bit is going to the community. And then the rest is getting distributed however we feel like. And we weren't given any opportunity to voice how we felt about it or have any ideas. We were just shut out from the process completely, and voila, here it is, you know. And, and I think that's my point of frustration with this process is that the majority of the city council wasn't involved in creating this. I thought that was our job to do this together. And, and I, I would like an opportunity to actually have input on this. I haven't been given that yet, and, and that's really what I'm looking forward to. So whatever we need to do to, to get it together and, and actually be a real city council that works on something together instead of being told what to do by a minority, I think that would probably be better for the city because that's, that's our job.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Honda.
So we had a number of meetings, council meetings where we discussed ARPA money before the ad hoc committee got together. And we went round and round and round, and nothing was being done except staff would bring something to us, and we would say, okay, we'll go ahead and buy police vehicles and the pool slide for $500,000 and additional. I mean, we spent a lot of money anyway, just by staff coming to us, asking for these things piecemeal. And that wasn't working. And, but council wasn't having a very robust discussion because I, I'm not sure if people were shy about asking for things or, or what was going on. The ad hoc committee asked for council input into what council wanted to see. We didn't get any. This was. This was something that, all of these things are what staff wanted. We already did the hazard pay, we did the broadband infrastructure, we did the grant coordinator. We spent a fair amount of money already. I agree, we need a very robust council discussion. I would love for that to happen. I just want it to happen.
Would you prefer, council, would, council president?
Well, I'm, I'm, thank you very much, deputy mayor. And mayor, I think we just need to set up a special session, to go over everything, make a decision as a, as a full council. Uh huh, thank you, and then, and then, and bring it to our next meeting for a approval.
Well, the next meeting, we're going to have a council member gone. So we're going to have to-
What's about the next meeting, when she's here? The seven are here. It's not like we have to spend the money today.
So if, the, because we're going to have, so if you'll be here, the, which would be the first meeting in?
October.
October.
I'll be here.
Okay. Stephanie, excuse me, Stephanie, what's with me and names today? Stephanie, what time, or, excuse me, good grief.
Six thirty?
On that first meeting in October, do we have a study session scheduled right now?
We do, mayor. We have budget workshop scheduled.
Oh.
So, actually the next-
Maybe what we can do is set a separate date that's not aligned with the council, like we are doing with the budget. Because essentially, this is, I think actually what we're hearing is, this is obviously a significant historic amount of money, that this is akin to a budget discussion, that's going to take a lot of, of all of us kind of coming together.
Can we do it Monday?
No way.
So, mayor, if I, if I could interject.
Yeah.
Part of the, part of the point of this discussion, we want everyone to be able to attend, so we probably shouldn't pick a date. While we don't have two council members that can participate in the discussion.
Okay.
So the motion on the table is to postpone indefinitely, and the agenda setting group can then work to find a agreeable date.
As soon as possible, as soon as profitable.
So the next open study session is after the budget, so in November? But you could tag it on to the after a committee meeting, like after Federac or something like that, where-
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on a date before that. I think it's important for us to have that discussion prior to November. Council, that's my opinion, but I'm not a member of the council. Councilmember Doby?
So I have one more question. Okay, we're, we're, we're an elected body of seven. Can't we do it on a day, take a day and spend from noon to five if it takes, or all day, or, I mean, this is really important stuff. So I don't want to be locked in to say, hey, it's a special session from four to five. This is like all day Saturday, or whatever it is, so everybody's scheduled, we're here to serve the citizens, we're here to spend our time to think about this. So let's not think about a two-hour slot or a one-hour slot. Let's pick a day where we're all committed, I don't, if it's a Saturday, or if it's a Friday, we can all schedule our, make our time, so we can do what's right for the citizens.
All right, I will, we'll-
I'm leaving after, in, in October sometime.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll work on that. All right.
I think that's an excellent idea, and in the past, people haven't wanted to do that, because some of them work, so, but we will have to get-
Let's do it.
Okay, all right, there is a motion and a second before the council to postpone this, for a date to be determined. I think there's general consensus that that date would be sooner, and, and that we want to look for a meeting that's not necessarily tethered to a city council meeting.
What a great idea.
All right, okay. Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed. All right, the, the vote is unanimous. We stand right now, we are at eight forty-five. We'll, we'll take a seven, eight-minute recess. I'll set the alarm, and we're, we're in recess. Just for points of personal privilege, we'll, we'll reconvene in about eight minutes. Okay, let's reconvene. All right. Guess who forgot to set his timer for eight minutes? This guy.
It's been nine.
Okay, all right. Okay, council committee and regional committees report. Oh, we've lost councilmember Walsh, right? He hasn't-
He's been gone for a long time.
All right, very good, as have I. Councilmember Doby?
Yes, my meeting is going to be on the 12th, which is next week in New York Land Use.
Oh, Mike.
Oh, excuse me.
Take two.
Take two. The land use meeting will be on the 12th, Monday at 5:00 PM.
All right. Councilmember Tran is gone. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, councilmember Sabodasa.
I have no report, thank you.
All right. Deputy mayor and regional committees report.
Boy, that was fast.
Yes.
Okay, so AWC is having two things to call your attention to. One is called Cities on Tap. They've been doing it for a few years, where they go around to different cities around the state, and they talk about the legislative year coming up, and budgets, and whatever council members want to talk about. They did one here at Federal Way Community Center, which was really nice several years ago. That was really cool. However, if you look at their schedule of cities, the, we're going to do it online, because the nearest city to us is Everett. So we'll probably be online, and I believe that is early November. Anyway, it's worthwhile going to, and I would encourage you to go. They also have their elected officials essentials, elected official essentials webinars, a series of one-hour classes online. The next one that's coming up is September 14th. It's on zoning for affordable housing. But we have already paid for it, because I've been attending, they've already had two, and they're going to have four more after this. I would encourage you to, if you can't attend on September 14th, it's, you can log on later and, and watch it, so I would encourage you to do that. I am going to be bringing up to, at a, hopefully at the next council meeting, where we adjust the requirements for youth commissioners. We, David Clemens reached out to me, he is staff for the youth commission, and he would like to request that we adjust the requirement that youth live in Federal Way, and that youth are only sophomores and juniors. He has some seniors in high school that are interested in the youth commission, and we have currently a application from a young man who attends Thomas Jefferson, but lives outside of the city. And so I would like us to take a really good look at that, and have a discussion at the next council meeting, and hopefully change the requirements for that, so that we can get more youth involved. And David Clemens does have some youth that fit this criteria, that are ready to serve, so I, I hope that we agree to do that. Next week, I have a board of health meeting, and we will be meeting our new director of public health, Dr. Khan. I was privileged to be on one of the interview teams for the new director of public health, and spent a few hours in interviews, and learned a lot about Dr. Khan. I'm anxious to work with him. There'll be a briefing on monkeypox, opioid use, and harm reduction in King County is going to be- to be the major topic at that Board of Health meeting, which is September 15th at 1:00, online. And September 13th is a Domestic Violence Initiative meeting for King County. On, um, Channel 13, they have a program called Spotlight. It's on, I watch it Saturday nights at 11:00 because I have exciting life on Saturday. This week, they had a discussion on domestic violence in King County and the different things that have been, um, that we've been working on. One is, um, turning in your weapons, which I'm sure the mayor could talk a lot about that. But one is a pet program where they actually match pets with folks who are in domestic violence and getting out of domestic violence so that they have somebody that they can, that'll love them and that they can take care of. Anyway, it was, it's worth watching. It's a half-hour program on Channel 13 called Spotlight. And then the PIC meeting is on September 14th. We will be discussing the legislative priorities for SCA, commercial aviation capacity, regional board and committee call for nominations, and that will be in early October. So if you're interested in serving on a regional board or committee in 2023, please go ahead and look at what they are and be ready to apply. DV Awareness Month is in October. And then we always talk about potential future levies and ballot measures. All council members can attend the PIC meeting. It is still online, although there's discussion of going back to in-person meetings. And, um, you just can't speak, but you can, you can attend it because they only let one person per city at the table to speak, to control the, the time. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Council President report.
No report, thank you.
All right. Consent agenda has one item. Item A, the minutes for the August 9th, 2022, regular and special meeting minutes. Uh, Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
I move approval of item A on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
But a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven A passes, thank you. Item 8A, council business authorization of state opioid settlement agreement. Staff report by Ryan Call, City Attorney. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight seeking authority to have the city join, um, a settlement negotiated by the Washington State Attorney General with three principal opioid distributors. It's Amerisforis, Bergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson. I was here a few months back where we talked about what would be called the One Washington MOU, which was the structure that they wanted a certain percentage of the, of the, of the state cities to agree to in order to begin negotiating. They're going to use that same structure in this, this settlement. So the main key difference is this is not us agreeing to a structure. It's us agreeing to an actual settlement. So in order for the negotiated settlement to take effect, 90% of Washington cities over 10,000 people must participate, must sign the participation form. So far, it's been a slow start, so we're hoping that everybody does it in the next few weeks, but they're still well below the 90, 90. I think they need like 178 cities and they had maybe 50. So I think most of the entities are like us and they're addressing it in the first meeting in September. The total amount of the settlement will be $518 million to the state. Of that 518, the state gets some, counties get some, but 215 is earmarked for cities. And our percentage would be based on our historical impacts, based on statistics gathered by the federal government. It's the same data that was used in the national settlement that Washington State opted out of. But it puts us, I have the percentage in my report, but we get .306% over 17 years to use, um, in addressing the effects of, of the opioid crisis. So if this, um, document is executed, it must be executed by September 23rd, meaning 90% of the cities over 10,000 in Washington and all of the litigants signed. My understanding is all the litigants have signed, so it's right now just cities that have not up till now really participated in this process. So a lot of it's been an ad campaign. I'm sure you've all received emails from the Attorney General or their, um, the people in charge of this over there. If it is executed, then the first check would come very quickly, December 1st of this year. So like I said, they're not equal checks every year. It's got a distribution scheme, um, but we would be getting money, um, for the next 17 years if, if we sign it. The mayor's recommendation is to execute all the documents necessary to join this settlement, um, and that's my recommendation as well. We've made no indication or, or had any thoughts of pursuing this sort of thing on our own, uh, by ourselves, and this is a good, frankly, a very cost-effective way to get some money that we probably wouldn't otherwise see. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Deputy Mayor Hunter?
Thank you, thanks, Ryan. So what impacts did the federal government measure? And, um, what impacts are we currently having that they can measure? And how mu- exactly how much money are you talking about because, that we would get?
If my math is correct, it's, um, it's $658,000.
A year?
Over 17 years.
Oh, over so- 600,000 over 17 years?
I expect that a lot of cities, we'll have to decide how to use it. I think that cities, you're going to see a lot of pooling of resources, um, either at the county level or with made, like, south, southbound cities pooling their money together to make it more effective. Um, as far as your question as to metrics, honestly, that's...
One more question.
Yes.
On the money. So if we pooled our money together in the south with the SCA cities in the south, could we have a treatment center? Is that money could go to that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we'd have enough money for that. That's something we could look into for sure. Um, that is absolutely one of the approved, the, the opioid impacts that we're supposed to address with this money are treatment, education, mostly social services type things. So yeah, that would be directly on point.
Okay, thank you. And the impacts, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I don't have a good answer for the stats. So it's, it's, uh, statistics mumbo jumbo is, is my technical thing. So they looked at, they have stats that they pull for, for how much money has been spent on specific things, and some cities spent more than others. I questioned that myself. It seemed like those communities with the money to spend would have spent it versus maybe those that didn't have as much to spend. But this has been the basis of the national negotiation from the get-go, from the very beginning. So it's not something that we can really change.
Okay.
So our percentage, I compared us to other cities. It's not population-based, so we, we are lower than some of our neighbors, but higher than others. So it doesn't seem to be tied to population, but it's certainly not tied to some of the less concrete things that we, less, more abstract things we think of like lost wages and crime and things like that. These are actual, like, health impacts and, uh, treatment, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, um, Council, Deputy Mayor asked, um, one of my questions, but, um, so we're pass-through, right? So have we decided which department this would go, is it Human Services then, once the money comes to us, if we accept it?
We don't have to be pass-through. We can use this money for any of the enumerated reasons in the settlement agreement, which there's a ton of them. If, like I said, if, you know, we're talking about less than $100,000 a year, so there's not a lot that we probably can do directly that would have a, a large impact. There might be something I'm not thinking of. It's certainly not my department. The obvious, natural place to put it would be in, in, uh, Human Services, but we might want to join forces with, uh, like the Deputy Mayor said, uh, local cities to make the money go farther.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dovey?
I just want to clarify something I think I heard. You said it was about $638,000 over 17 years?
If my math is correct...
Like 30 grand a year?
And I didn't mess up the decimal place, it's .306 of 250, 215 million, which is about 658,000.
Which is less than 50,000 a year?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, it's good money, but it's not a lot of money.
Right.
Okay. Okay, um, uh, Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
I do, Mayor. I move approval of city participation in the settlement agreement negotiated by the Washington Attorney General of the opioid distributors and authorize execution of all required documents. Second.
But a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Better pass unanimously. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, we're on to council reports. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, thank you. Ethiopian New Year's is on the 12th of this month, this coming weekend, and we're having a huge celebration in Seattle, and I would love for you guys to join us. It's going to be on the 17th, and, um, I will send out the invitation. It's just for you to see the culture, the food, the people, the, I won't be there, but, um, I'm still inviting everyone to...
There's food?
Yes, there's food and there's music. So it'd be great if you guys could join us if you're free on a Sunday afternoon at 2:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tennessee Park?
Is Ethiopian food?
Very good, okay. Councilwoman Norton? Do you have a report?
No report.
All right, thank you.
But I would like to eat some Ethiopian food.
All right. Me too. All right, Councilmember Dovey?
I have no report, but Ethiopian food is great.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
I had a friend in high school from Ethiopia, and she cooked for us. It was really good. However, okay, so, um, I just, I want to congratulate the folks who worked on Camp Killworth because it took a lot of years of work. It actually started around 2000, year 2000, when they initially, the scouts wanted to get out of the camp because of the costs. So, um, Marie Sakwa did a great job representing the city at, uh, the landmark commission meeting, and I want to congratulate her for that. So, uh, the Arts Commission is also supposed to be working on heritage issues. That's the, um, ordinance that created the Arts Commission back in the day, put arts and heritage. And when I was on the Arts Commission, we had for a while a member of the, um, Historical Society as a member. I'd like to see that commission go back to that because now that we have successfully completed our first landmarks commission here in, and we were successful in getting a program, a building, several buildings dedicated to, um, for historical preservation, I think it would be a really good idea to get somebody on the Arts Commission to be working on heritage issues, um, other than those folks on the Historical Society. Sarah Steen is the Landmark Coordinator for King County Historic Preservation Program, and we talked about, she and I talked about the Brooklake property. I know she's looked at it, but I would really encourage us to contact her and work on getting that property designated, the landmark property, because then there's money. There's extra money to help preserve the property. And since we own the property, because in our, um, we have to have the owner of the property agree to designate the property as a landmark. Not all cities have that in their ordinance, but we do. So as owners of Brooklake, I think we should move forward with that as quickly as we can.
I agree. John, uh, let's me, myself, you, and Brian talk about this tomorrow.
That'd be awesome. And Sarah is ready and waiting to help us. She, she is, is very eager to help save Brooklake property, so. And other than that, I would just, um, Happy New Year, Lydia, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, the budget season. So for the, the public, I think we, um, can get this bubbly, the public, the meetings for the budget out so people know when they're happening, and they can be part of it because we want their input in our budget.
Yep.
And we get our budget September 20th?
Yep.
Awesome. That's the next meeting, so.
Exactly. Awesome. Great, thank you. Um, oh, it is the next meeting, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
I better get to work on it. All right, just kidding, everybody. All right. Council President?
No report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, hey, thank you. It's an honor and privilege to serve with you. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.